Barb?
Here.
Jovanini?
Here.
Cogger? Bradshaw? Cranford?
Here.
Howard? Here. Willy?
Here.
Okay, thank you. I hope everyone's had a chance to look at the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments to make? If none, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll motion to approve the consent.
Second.
Motion by Cranford, second by Willy. Roll call, please.
Here. Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to our regular agenda. Item A is the golf cart ROHV rules.
Yep, this one I just put on there so I could publicly make a reminder. We put some signs up at the Homestead Riverside Park. I know we have municipal band concerts and we have Rockin' at the River coming. And with the introduction of ROHVs on the streets as well, it became important that we make sure we limit those vehicles and keep them out of the parks, all of them. And so from this point on, we've always had rules that said there were no vehicles allowed in the grass and we've never really enforced that with golf carts. But that's changing and we will be enforcing that with golf carts. That's really all that was, is just a public reminder, no golf carts, no ROHVs on the grass in any park. The only exception to that is a golf cart only can still use the bike path to get to the Recplex and they have to stay in that designated area where golf carts are allowed out there.
Will there be some signage put on the bike path?
Yes, we'll need to, we'll need to put some signage out there. I was out there the other day. I know we had a report of a truck driving out there and it is easily, you can easily get around out there and there is no signage there. We'll get some signs put out there.
Okay, does that meet everybody's thoughts about that? Item B, community enrichment update. It looks like Liz is all ready to go with that.
All ready to go.
Let's enrich our community.
Let's enrich it. Good evening, Council. A couple meetings ago, there was a question about some of the literature that we hand out and I just thought there's new people, we might want to do a little bit of a refresher on what we do. I will though quickly just want to point out the summer mailers. I have those in front of everyone. Hannah did a fantastic job designing these. They're a little different than what we previously done, but those in Pontiac mailboxes, you should have probably gotten them Friday or Saturday. And then they're going out to some outlying communities. If they haven't gotten them, they should get them today or tomorrow. So just looking at your bags very quickly, I just want to point out a couple of things that we put in there. Now, this is more, just as an example, we do definitely, we build bags for groups. We change it up all the time, so I just wanted you guys to have these. But we usually throw a couple little postcard collectibles in there. Of course, our three main brochures, which is the museums, the murals, and the Lincoln. We keep these up to date. We actually moved the design in-house about three years ago and it makes it easier. So for instance, when we just added the cashier exhibit, we were able to quickly update this and do a new print run. Same with when we added the new mural. People that aren't, or maybe even people, I think people from in-town don't necessarily know this, but we have the footprints on the ground around downtown. And the red ones, so the red brochure, they take you to all the murals. And the blue ones, they take you to all the museums. So I like to just tell people that too, in case they've ever wondered what those footprints are doing on the ground. If you see somebody looking around, trying to get around, you can help them out that way. We also have two additional ones that we've created. Bob Waldmeyer, we actually worked with his brother on this to kind of tell Bob's story. Also our swinging bridges, which some people will say is our biggest attraction in Pontiac, which they are pretty cool. And if you're local and you've never gone with somebody from out of town on a bridge, I highly recommend it. It's one of my favorite things. Next, we have the downtown brochure. Misty's put this together. It kind of lets you know where things are, you know, find us on Mill, find us on Madison. It kind of groups all of the shops and everything together. And then I just added in a couple of our rack cards that we put out. We have a rack card that continuously publicizes our ride carpet corridor year-round. We found this was good to have in, they're called tourist information centers, TICs. We have permission to put these in. So it helps promote the festival year-round and people can just mark their calendars that first full weekend in May. And then also extending the stay in Pontiac, it publicizes hotels on there. And then we still do the VIP program. So the VIP program, for those of you that have never heard of it, it is visitor in Pontiac. So at our, two of our museums, at the Pontiac Oakland Museum and at the Route 66 Museum, a visitor can pick this up, they can wear the button, and then if you flip on the inside, there's the map of the downtown. And then there is also a list of different participating businesses. A lot of them have, maybe you get 10% off, maybe you get, I know Lola, are you on here?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just can't see it, I'm sorry. It's on here, anyway. Oh yeah, Lola. So if you're wearing your button, Lola's, you get 15% off your meal. Some of them give away like a free sticker at the Greater Livingston County Arts Council. So it's a fun way to get people out walking the streets and into the doors of our downtown visitors and businesses. And then we do have our bigger visitors guide that has a lot more in-depth things on our, you know, our parks, places you can meet, things, you know, getting around where we're located. It just has a lot more in-depth information. Anybody have any questions about any of that? I think that all just happened from somebody asking about a map.
I have a question about the map. Are you moving on to the map or is there more?
No, we can talk about it.
Well, is there any place where this is largely visible downtown or?
Yeah, at that kiosk right across the street.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Yep. This is a good map. This is really good.
And then I just wanted to throw a couple numbers out there. So we had kind of been watching sales over at the gift shop and they were, they were up a considerable amount over last year, so I kind of assumed that we were doing the same attendance-wise at the Route 66 Museum, but I was surprised today. We are actually down just a little bit year-over-last year. But when I compared it, because we track in-state, out-of-state, international group travel, and then as a whole for the day, our international travel is down this year and I think we can all understand about that. So I think that that's where we're kind of losing that. However, we are up 19% on our sales year-to-date over last year at the gift shop, so that's kind of exciting. And then just as a quick, one last update for the department, we do have a trolley driver and he started on Saturday.
And he loves it. I talked to him today.
He was having a blast, yeah. Yeah, so we're very excited about that. I think he's going to be a really, really good addition and it's just nice seeing the trolley out. When I was out training him, there were two people local here in town that were like, can we just get on here? And I'm like, hop on! So we gave him a tour and they were like, we didn't even know about all this stuff and we live here. So it was kind of fun. So yeah, that's a little bit of an update about our department. I may have any questions?
Okay, thank you. Yeah. And I bet you get to stay up there for the approval of the art cars program. Item number C.
So, the committee for the art cars has met. We reviewed a couple different programs, different places, and we put this together just so we can announce who's on the committee. Barb Howard was representing city council. We had Ann Stevenson at Route 66 Kites. She is representing the downtown retailers. And then we had Lisa Green representing the Greater Livingston County Arts Council. Misty was there and then as well as myself, I was there too. So if you look through this, you know, I don't know if anyone's had a chance to review it, if you have questions, but you know, we kind of built off of other programs that we had found and then also just talking with what, you know, would work for us in our I don't know if anyone has any specific questions right off the bat or if there's anything we want to discuss.
Is there any age minimum to be able to participate? I know at one time there was some conversation back at meetings ago.
There was. I don't know that it made it on to this per se. I would think though, if it was somebody within a certain age that we would have to have, like they wouldn't be able to sign a contract.
True that. Yep, okay. I have no opinion, I was just curious about that since I knew we had talked about it, so.
And we've purchased the art cars.
Yeah, yep. They'll be here soon.
Does anybody have any questions or any, does all look good? That we're okay with taking a vote to approve of the proposal here to?
I'd make a motion to approve, yes.
Motion by Mike Bar. Anyone second? Second by John Willey. Roll call, please.
Howard?
Yes.
Willy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item D is appointment to the library board trustees of three-year terms expiring June 30th, 2028. I have a request from Connie Snyder, the board president, to respectfully request that the following board members each should be reappointed to the library board for an additional three-year term expiring June 30th, 2028. And those people are Connie Snyder, Eric Hoover, and Kathy McLean. Do we need three separate motions, Alan? One motion, okay.
Unless somebody wants to break them down. If the council member would want to make a motion because they only want to vote for one or against one or something.
Sure, okay.
You can put them together if everybody's good.
Okay, is everyone good with one, one motion and?
Yes.
Vote, okay. John, are you making the motion to approve of that? Do I have a second?
Here.
Barb Howard, second. Roll call, please, Kelsey.
Willy?
Yes.
Barb?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number E, resolution 2025 R 004, the library building maintenance levy. Have you taken this one, Jim?
I will. If this is a matter of formality, we do every year, the, at the request and the recommendation of the board of trustees from the Pontiac Library, they've determined the additional 0.02% tax authorized under section 31 of the Library Act is necessary for the maintenance and the operation of the Pontiac Public Library for paying for the cost, which levy of that said 0.02% is authorized. So this resolution in essence states that the, that if the public would prefer a referendum, then the city would have to receive a petition within 30 days of the passage of the resolution and it has to have at least 10% of the voters. Right now, the registered number of voters in Pontiac is 6,060, so a number equal to 606 or more total number of voters desiring for this to be on a petition shall be within 30 days after the publication of this resolution and there'll be a said notice of intent. If that does not happen, then this will, like typically happens every year, will just be a tax levy at the end of the year.
How much will that raise for the library?
Um, I'm trying to think.
It's not much. It's very small.
I think it's in the 20-some thousand. Yeah, it's not a lot. It's just to help cover maintenance costs.
Does anyone else have any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve resolution 2025 R 004.
First by Barb Howard, second by John Willey. Roll call, please.
Barb?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willy?
Yes.
Thank you. Kristen?
Thank you.
Thank you for all you do.
Item number F, approval of the Centennial Plaza bid.
Yeah, so June 4th, we received, at 2:00 PM, we opened the bids for Centennial Plaza. We had two bids. Opera Men Construction had a base bid of $3,434,500 and there were three alternates in the project. Those alternates are the alley to the south and, which was milling and res servicing. And then the second, it says Alt 32, but the 3 is supposed to be a number sign. Alt 2 is the alley to the northwest and some paving and festoon lighting. And then Alt number 3 was lighting, and that's lighting above the mural, some in-ground lighting in the artificial turf and pedestrian sidewalk lighting. So their alternate bids total with the alternates was $3,561,500. The second bid was H.J. Apple &amp; Company. Their base bid, again another misspelling, was $1,484,500. And their alternates, with their alternates, the total with the alternates was $1,637,995.50. The project budget was $1,500,000 and as you can see, H.J. Apple's base bid is under that. My recommendation would be to accept the alternates as well, mainly because two of those alternates are alleys and while that's torn up, that would be the best time to just finish those two projects off as a capital project. And then with the alternate 3, that would just finish off the project, so if anyone has any questions.
So these numbers are, the project complete?
Yes, this is, if the project completed the way we designed it with the alternates, then the, we pulled those three alternates out to make sure we met our budget.
Yeah. Well, the second one is so much closer to where we wanted it to be.
Yep.
Really pleased with the upper one, so.
Can anyone explain why there was such a discrepancy between the two?
So...
That bothers me.
Yeah, the bid, the first time we did it, the bid from Opera Men was the same as it is this time and so nothing changed on their bid. I don't really have an answer why. I know in, you know, just from opening, opening the bids and I've had now a chance to speak with Andy and they, he went and got all the prices he could from subcontractors. Yeah, that's what he felt was going to be the fair price.
Jim, does this include the price of the canopy?
Oh yes, yeah, the base, the base does.
Okay.
So, will we still be looking at the various elements in there and making some changes to those? I mean, we had talked about things like, you know, grasses and artificial turf, is that in that?
Yes, so that, artificial turf is alternate number 3.
Okay.
And that would be the lighting above the mural, that in-ground lighting, we talked about some lighting that was in the pavement as well as that artificial turf in sections and that pedestrian sidewalk lighting. That would, that would be only if you accepted alternate number 3.
Mike, are you talking about adding the picnic benches, the picnic tables too, along with all the pots? Was that included in that also?
So...
All that that we talked about last week?
Yeah, so, you know, we talked about the seating being like half cars and both of the contractors were not able to find a supplier and so we pulled that out of this bid. And so seating would be something we'll come up with, whether it be nice outdoor picnic tables, that would be on us. It's not part of a bid, any seating.
I think with that, that first bid being so high, that's when houses...
Well, there were so many figures and things to talk about that meeting.
Yeah, so, you know, in their first bid, and you know, admittedly, Apple didn't put
in a bid that first time and, you know, Opera Men stated that was right when the tariffs started happening and there was some big concern. I know some of the subcontractors were leery to give, give prices and so I know Opera Men just didn't want to get stuck. That was their main worry was that they were going to put a bid and then find out, okay, well, price has just doubled on steel or something and, yeah, so there was some concern.
I think we knocked out some of the things that we thought were over, before we went, when we reduced our budget, I think we knocked out those things.
In the beginning, if you remember, there was some artwork on the side of the building and like taillights and all that stuff. That stuff's out. This alternate bid, alternate number 3 does include that, I mean, alternate number 2 includes that festoon lighting in that alley to give it that look and, but as well as, the main cost of that is paved in that alley.
With Opera Men not revisiting the, the original proposal, it might be they have enough work this year and just didn't want to redo, retake a look at that. It could be, I mean, that's a possibility.
Yeah, yeah, right.
That might be the disparity between the two prices.
Two local contractors and I guess at one point you can say at least we had bids from our local contractor.
We need a motion.
Yes.
I'll make a motion.
To accept what, what?
Apple.
But what parts, all parts or?
All parts and the alts.
All parts and the alts, okay. Do I have a second? John, okay. John, okay.
Jovanini?
No.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Item G, appointment of Sarah Horner to fill the two-year of an unexpired four-year term in Ward 2, and I'll read a short bio of Sarah, who is here tonight, if anyone doesn't know Sarah. Sarah resides at 2 Crystal Court, which is a condo out near the golf course. She grew up in rural Graymont. She holds a master's degree in business administration and a bachelor's degree in agribusiness, farm, and financial management, both from the University of Illinois at Urbana-Champaign. She holds two full-time jobs. One, number one, as a lending specialist with Compeer Financial, and number two, as a conventional corn and soybean farmer alongside her dad and uncle. She has an active role in the Illinois Farm Bureau, serving on several committees, and currently serves as the treasurer, secretary of the Livingston County Farm Bureau. I would say, I have vaguely known Sarah for the last several years, probably known of her for her whole life. She's a go-getter. She's, she loves to be involved. Her roots here are good. She's really in the agricultural, which is, you know, really the main thing that goes on around here, and she's got a lot of connections in the legislature with her role at the Farm Bureau, so she's, she's got, she's, she knows a lot of people around. She travels all across the northern part of the state, so she's, she can show us lots of examples, I would say. So I would encourage a nomination for approval on Sarah, if anybody wants...
I would just make one note on this appointment, is that this is two years of that four-year term that Miller vacated, so in, in two years, there'll still be two years left, but...
She'll have to be elected.
She'll have to run for election, or, you know, there will be an election for the remainder. It'd be an election for two years, that time.
I'd like to make a motion, we approve Sarah.
Motion by Barb, second by John. Roll call, please.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number H is the appointment of, yes. So Sarah will be sworn in at our next meeting on July 7th, and the others provide. H is the appointment of Chan Gill to fill the two-year remainder of my unexpired term in Ward 2, and I have, Chan is not here tonight, but I have a brief bio of him to tell, Chan resides at 1826 Cardinal Court. He is married and has five children, three grown daughters who are all married and have, he has grandkids, two children that still reside with him, that he and his wife adopted several years ago, so basically a second family for Chan. He was born in Germany, moved to Pontiac in 1996. He was educated at Phoenix College, and the University of Phoenix has a BS in business administration. He is currently employed, I gotta think, I gotta look here, where, employed by Phoenix Contact HQ, oh no, that's back, goes back. Well, he works, he worked, he's an electrical salesperson for manufacturing, so he's, he's out and has a territory. He also, he serves as a public speaker in smart manufacturing, sustainability, and on panels related to smart manufacturing. So I, I've known Chan really since he moved to Pontiac, and he's, he's a very, he's a very calm man who thinks a lot about things, and because of his, his work in the manufacturing industry, he knows, he's just got a lot of connections in there, so I look forward to someone making a motion that, to approve my nomination of Chan, and...
I gladly make that motion.
Second by John. Roll call, please.
Okay. Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
And last but not least, item number I, appointment of Anna Horner to fill the two-year remainder of the unexpired term in Ward 3 of Jason, and Hannah probably, or Hannah. Anna, most of you know, and she is here tonight as well. She resides at 621 West Lincoln Street in Pontiac. She is a Pontiac native, a local restaurant owner, and mother of two sons. She has been regularly attending council meetings over the last year in a conscious effort to become more of what's going on in her community. She is an active Main Street participant and has taken on the coordination of Pontiac's Last Night Celebration, which will be held later this year. She is passionate about turning ideas into something special and wants to be able to make a difference, and I think she will be very enthusiastic as a member of our council.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Scott Cranford.
I'll second.
Second by Barb Howard. Roll call, please.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Thank you.
That wasn't for you.
I know.
Item number J, Ordinance 2025-0013, intergovernmental agreement with District 90 for pickleball. So I'll give that to Jim or Alan, I'm not sure which one.
So in working with pickleball, if you recall, the land that the little splash pad up there sits on belongs to District 90, and we had deed to that land, and it has a reverter of that if, is no longer to be used for the splash pad, it reverts back to District 90, and in our conversations with them, they're all in favor of this being converted over to pickleball courts. But to do that, we had to expand the land that we were using, and so we changed this agreement, and this agreement, if you go to the back, you would see a photo, a photograph of that, or a drawing of the size of the area, and this intergovernmental agreement, in essence, deeds that land that the pickleball will be used for, to the city, to be used for pickleball or other similar recreational purposes, and should we cede to, cease to use it for those purposes, it again would result, revert back to District 90. They have a meeting tonight, and they are voting as well. In talking with their Building and Grounds Committee, the only question they really had on it was that our agreement covered operation, maintenance, and so we're, I think we're in, in good shape. So, like I said, we, we've talked with them throughout the process, and they're very much in favor of, of this project, so. With that, I would, I would ask the council to pass this agreement, intergovernmental agreement.
Do I have a motion?
I saw you.
I'll second.
Motion by Barb, second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Crowser?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Okay, next up is Misty to give a little bit of background on the downtown social district parameters that we have, we're presenting tonight. We don't plan to take any action tonight. It's really more for us to introduce what we've come up with to you, and then if all seems smooth, we will present them at the next meeting for vote. So take it away, Misty.
Thank you. I was really excited when the mayor asked me for some recommendations about implementing a social district in the downtown. I think last year's taste, where we did kind of do a trial run, went very smoothly, showcasing just how, how adult people can behave when it comes to wanting to be downtown, and everyone's time is limited when they're out with their families and having a few days off here and there, and so enjoying an adult beverage with our businesses, it's just, it's a good step forward. We would ask that the businesses, the licensed establishments, they would be required to obtain a social district permit and serve the beverages and cups not larger than 16 ounces. We would have a special cup that would have the downtown logo on one side, and then the permit holders logo on the other side, so should you have any issues, you would see that, where they purchased their alcohol from, if you have somebody that was not behaving or having some issues. They would then, then be able to be out in the social district area with those beverages in that cup, and they could buy a beverage at Acres and then walk down to the farmer's market or whatever the event was being held. I think we would be looking at this time for like the first phase, it would be city-approved, city-sponsored events held within the social district boundaries, such as the cruise nights, the farmer's market, municipal band concerts, rocking at the river concerts. The social district boundaries would be kind of like the typical cruise night boundary somewhat, but they would be like water to Howard on Main and Mill. You would have Washington Street in there, and you would have Madison Street all the way down to Plum, Plum Street to Howard, and of course excluding the courthouse grounds because that's county property. There would be some parameters that would have to be put into place on what you would do for like the rivers, the Bay and Shell area for those events. You would have to come up with however you're going to let somebody do an off-site vending down there, and they'd have to get the state permit, that type of thing. We would go with Donald's and the general store to give us their pricing on the cups, and then it would be up to the establishments that are approved and have obtained like a $50 permit to go in there, buy their cups, and have, keep cups on hand for people that want to come in and buy the beverages. They'd be able to do two, purchase two beverages for outside consumption per transaction, so you couldn't go in there and buy like six beers to walk around, you would just be able to get two of the cups, and they would be at their, they would have to keep track of their cups, you know, if they ran out of cups and they didn't have the outside cups, they would not be able to vend to somebody, so they would have to make sure that they had the right amount of cups. A lot of the things that you would have to do is make sure you have like a yearly meeting. Hey, if you want to be a participating business and you want to pay the $50, that would help offset signage and stuff that says you're entering the district, probably with a QR code. There's a picture in here that shows kind of what that would look like, and also signage on the other side that says you're exiting the social district area, but very strict on the setting a yearly meeting where you come, you learn about all the rules, how it pertains, can they go into a shopping area or not a shopping area. You would have to invite a lot of your downtown businesses that wanted to also participate, because if they wanted to allow someone to step into their business with that beverage, they would have to know the rules and that signage on their building as well, that they're a participating business that is allowing that. So I think it's, there are a lot of communities doing it in a lot of different ways. Good research on the internet will show you kind of what they're doing, so I also think that having them be very responsible to make sure that their staff is well-trained on how these things roll and what they can do and what they cannot do, so. It would make a huge difference on a lot of our downtown events and stuff. People will stay longer, people will shop longer. I know just from the farmer's market this year, having music added, some people would really like to have a mimosa or Bloody Mary from an adjacent, you know, business that is, serves that sort of thing, and then be able to sit and enjoy some music and stuff, so. Annual training, a $50 buy-in, so you can offset some signage cost. I think you would, we have Acres, Mill Street Tap, and we have Bob and Ringo's at this moment. We're soon to have Route 66 Roadhouse, they're getting their liquor license, and I think this would be a good phase one. Phase two could include not just special events, but once Centennial Plaza is complete, making that like an 11 to an 11 during the day type of event, so that people that buy something at Mill Street can step out back, or Acres can be out back, and then move to the point where if somebody goes into Bernardi's that has like, you know, they get their liquor license, they don't really have any option for outdoor seating and allowing them to be across the street in Block 59 for that sort of thing would probably be an ideal phase to move into, so. I think it's a very positive, progressive move, in my opinion.
Does anybody have any comments or questions, or?
The only thing I would suggest is the first year of the thing, instead of a yearly meeting with the vendors, it would be more like a quarterly meeting, so get some feedback from them, from what they're experiencing and what's going on, so that we know what to do, you know, in the following months, to make sure we don't get it all screwed up before we get to the end of the year.
Oh, I mean, that's a good idea, especially if you have, you roll it out and you get into the middle of cruise nights, you've had a few cruise nights, you've had a few farmer's markets, you've had some concerts, and then you're like, let's relook at this, and feedback from the city as well as those businesses to say if there's been any issues.
Make sure we don't have one vendor getting all the business and, you know, things like that, because that can happen too.
But that would be a buyer's choice.
Right.
This is true.
That would be a buyer's choice. Some people will only go into one establishment, and that's it, but you're not discounting anyone that, you know, the district will be, the platform would be wide, or the footprint would be wide enough to hit everyone down there that has a liquor license, so I think that, that would be buyer's choice, but nothing would stop somebody from going into Acres and getting one of their drinks and venturing on down to the farmer's market.
Right.
Any more than going to Bob and Ringo's and that sort of thing.
So there'll have to be a, a price set of some sort too, I imagine.
As long as they have the cup, you know, and...
Yeah, they, I mean, the vendor could set their own prices, just like all their other drinks.
The, really, the only cost that would be to the city is to implement good signage, making sure the signs are always up, showing that you're entering the district and leaving the district, and the $50 would help offset some of that cost, but the cups, that would be on them to purchase and keep them in stock, and I personally like the fact of them adding their logo on the backside, because you get one person who's a troublemaker three times in a row, and you notice that they're always buying theirs at, you know, a certain establishment, then that's a good, it doesn't kill it for everybody, but it's more conversation and more like, you know, are you paying attention to how you're serving your patrons, that type of thing.
Plus for law enforcement, be able to...
Yeah.
Without having to disturb everything.
You could really be on the hook with not being a participant. You could just say, you know, you're, we're going to forfeit your participation if there's, you know...
Overserving.
Yeah. I mean, we have the taste coming up this weekend that we check IDs and give the cups for, and they're allowed to do that during the three hours. It worked very well last year. We didn't publicize it as a big blast, kind of just wanted to see how it rolled, and tons of good, positive feedback, and everyone enjoyed themselves, people seemed to stay down there longer, instead of just saying, hey, I'm only going to stay down here for a little bit because I can't have an adult beverage, and that's just some people's prerogative, so. I think it's, like I said, a really good, positive step. It will enhance a lot of our businesses that, you know, sometimes they lose out on business. It would keep people down here to have that adult beverage, and then buy more food, stay longer, enjoy the event longer, that sort of thing. I really do believe, so.
Anybody else got any other comments? Well, we'll fine-tune and come back next time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Greg gets the show, or I assume it's Greg gets the show here for a while.
That's you or mine.
Item L, so we're, we'll be doing, will you have, I don't, will you have a little explanation about each one?
No, it's, it's one explanation for every code.
Okay, so, ordinance, item L is Ordinance 2025-0014, adopting the 2024 International Building Codes.
So as of January 1st, the state of Illinois has required that every municipality that currently has a building code, adopt a building code within the last 10 years. So right now, we are, currently, we are enforcing the IBC 2012, so we are out of compliance. Our compliance date is as of July 1st, so we need to adopt a code within the last 10 years by July 1st, and we are proposing to adopt 2024. The 2024 cycle is, now, now that it has, has been out for a year, we kind of, some of the kinks have been worked out, and we will be able to adopt the 2024 code and stay in compliance until 2033, when we need to, when we will have to revisit.
Anybody got any questions about that?
Nope.
I need a motion to, yep, that's what we need.
Yeah, I, I think it would be good to at least discuss what the exception, exemptions were.
Yes.
What we did adopt and what we didn't change.
So in the building code itself, we have a, we, we met with an engineer who had, works in Normal and is on their Building Board of Reviews, Board of Appeals, and he recommended that when we adopt the building code, that there is some confusing and, what's the word I'm looking for, unhelpful language in, in Section 506.3.2, so if you'll see in the ordinance, point 3, we're actually, instead of adopting 2024 in it, in whole, we will be, we will be moving, we will be moving into, this was 2021's... 2021's table, 2021's table, and so the details of that table that are there in number three on this, on this section, it allows for a building frontage area, so when we are, some of the technical language, but if I have to allow for a building, an existing building to exempt certain things like sprinkler system, that sort of thing, it's clearer language and it is, it's more business-friendly to allow, to use this 2021 code. So we thought that would be gentler for our, for our community. And we also, and this will, it's in the building code, but it more, more directly affects the residential code, but in 2014, when we adopted 2012, we chose to exempt the requirement that a residential building, new residential be sprinkled, and we are going to continue that exemption.
Is that it?
That's it for, for 2014.
Do I have a motion to accept, to adopt?
I so move.
Motion by Barb?
Second.
Second by Jerry. Roll call, please.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Item number M, ordinance 2025-0015, adopting the 2024 International Residential Code.
Yes, and this is where we, again, I mentioned the fire sprinklers in the, in the building code, this is where it actually lives, and so you'll see that, that's sections four, five, six, and seven on the, on the ordinance, that we do exempt residential sprinklers in one and two family dwellings.
Any questions for Greg on this one? Do I have a motion to accept?
Do we need to talk about that metal siding part of this one?
Yes. The, when, again, in 2014, when we adopted 2012, the council also recommended that they wanted to limit vertical standing seam metal siding in the residential district to buildings under 200 square feet, and we did not, I'm, we didn't have any discussion on making that change, so that language is in this, in this ordinance.
Number 10.
Number 10, yes.
Remember those discussions?
Are we leaving that then? Now, that's, that's why I brought it up, we hadn't talked about it, it's left in there. But it can have horizontal steel siding that's made to look like wood siding or whatever. I mean, a lot of the old pre-vinyl and pre-aluminum siding was steel, you know, but the straight farm building siding, you can't build a house or a garage with it, you gotta have the little sheds you put in your backyard, 10 by 10, they can be that, that's the 200 square feet. 20 by 20, I guess, gets you to 400 square feet, so the 200, it'd have to be an odd size, but, you know, 10 by 20. But that, that's exactly the language that was used before, and going through this, we just, we just thought, without council direction not to do it, we'd continue it. Should we discuss it, or is it...
It's up to you guys.
It's up to you, I mean...
I still don't know what he might think.
It, it came up, as I recall, it came, as I recall, it came up primarily in a structure that was outside the corporate limits, over, off of John Street, across from where Mike Henson lives, if anybody knows who that is. That was what led to this, we didn't want to have people starting to build pole houses, which are FBI, Morton, they all promote residences made in that fashion. And the, because that seemed out of place to some of the council, they wanted this. Now, I don't know with the focus on housing, whether it would be better to allow it under certain circumstances. The code doesn't prohibit it, and you know, it's only residential, so commercial structures are very commonly built that way.
Right. I just think in a residential, it's aesthetically not pleasant, you know?
I agree. It's not.
So if you want to leave that in place, somebody make a motion to approve 15 as it is.
So is it, you said, is it going to be 200?
Anything less than 200 or less.
Less than 200.
And it has to be an accessory building.
And it has to be an accessory, I think the idea was the little metal storage sheds that people put together would still be okay. But something as big as a garage, building, even a one-car garage is probably over 200 square feet.
Yeah.
Okay.
So a motion to accept as written? Anyone?
So I'd make a, a motion for ordinance number 2025-01.
Okay, motion by Barb, second by Jerry. Roll call, please.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Item number N, ordinance 2025-0016, adopting the 2024 International Existing Building Code.
Yes, and this one comes in with no exceptions. We come, we adopt this one, we are recommending the adoption, part and parcel.
Okay. Motion by anyone?
I make a motion.
Motion by Barb, second.
I'll start.
John? Roll call, please.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Thank you. Item O, ordinance 2025-0017, adopting the 2023 National Electric Code.
As a whole.
As a whole, no exceptions. Motion by anyone?
I'll make the motion.
Jerry, second. Second by Scott. Roll call, please.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Thank you. Item P, ordinance 2025-0018, adopting the 2024 International Mechanical Code.
Yes, so again, this, no exceptions, just a couple of clarifications. We actually, there are, there are sections where they itemize the penalties for violations, and we insert our existing penalties, which are $500 for a violation of the International Mechanical Code. We do, there, excuse me, the code is written as such that imprisonment is an option for violating code, and we've, we exempt the imprisonment.
Okay.
I'm still watching you though, all right.
Don't worry.
Okay, do I have a motion for acceptance of those codes? Barb, second.
I'll second.
Mike? Roll call, please.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Thank you. Item Q, ordinance 2025-0019, adopting the 2024 International Property Maintenance Code.
And just as a point of education, most of the violations that I write for code enforcement come from this code, the Property Maintenance Code, which means that, yes, you have to take care of your lawn, you have, your, your building should be in solid structure, that if you have a commercial building, your lot should be in solid condition. So this is probably one of the more important codes that we have, and the only, these are, again, all of our exceptions or changes come, carry through from 2012, but the only place that we, there is any real, that there was a decision made by council was the height of grass, which becomes a violation, and it's been 12 inches, and we recommended that we carry it through.
Motion by anyone?
Make the motion.
To accept, Jerry? Second. Scott? Roll call, please.
Cawzer?
Yes.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, Greg.
Thanks, Greg.
Good work. Glad we got that done.
Fire code.
Oh, yeah, I'm on, well, but that's chief, yeah. Item R, ordinance 2025-0020, adopting the 2024 International Fire Code. Chief, take it away.
Okay, before I take it away here, I do want to give kudos to Greg. I only had one code I had to review, and that was a huge undertaking. He had seven or eight, so the time he spent into this, to make sure he reviewed it, educated himself, prepared himself for this meeting, he went above and beyond to do that, so kudos to you, Greg, that was a huge undertaking, and I'm very happy to see that he was able to get this through. This is something we've been trying to push for several years, to get these updated. The reason we were trying to push it, most of you are aware of our ISO accreditation process we go through about every three years, this was one thing that we continued to get, not in trouble for, but no additional points for. They kept saying, hey, you need to update this, you need to update this, so if we're able to update this tonight, this should help towards our ISO credit scoring, which overall helps our insurance ratings, which hopefully affects the cost of insurance for specifically commercial around here. So I'm very excited that we're finally to this point to be able to do this. So mine's really easy, the only one that we're keeping, which Greg's noted numerous times, the residential sprinkler, that was already put in this to be exempt from the codes when we did this in 2012, and as he said, we're going to continue to keep that for now. But other than that, there are no other changes. We would be asking to adopt the 2024 International Fire Code as is, with that exception. So I ask the council for approval to move forward with that.
Motion by anyone? Scott? Second, John? Roll call, please.
Cranford?
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Willie?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Jovanini?
Yes.
Cawzer?
Yes. Thank you, counsel.
Thanks, gentlemen. Glad to have, please.
While they are on the board, I will disinform the council. We are required to notify the state of Illinois, we'll give them 30 days' notice of our adoption of new code, so that notice will go out tomorrow, and these codes will go live as of the 16th of July.
Yay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work.
Good job.
I would only add that for, for those contractors or others who are interested in what's different between the codes, we do, we will have a copy here, there'll be a copy of these codes at the library. What's nice about what they've done in the codebooks now is there are QR codes throughout the book that say what has changed, and you can see what's changed from the previous editions. Now, we jumped multiple editions, but if you go back through them, you know, you could at least see the difference through. And then we'll post these on our website because there are a couple of things that are new, and eventually, these will make it, when we get cycled into municipal code online, they'll make their way in there. And if you're in section eight, or all the other ones, if you're online and you go to section eight, it'll tell you, like, we adopted this code, and it'll tell you what the exceptions are. Pretty easy, quick reference of, okay, so we have this code, here's what the differences are, eight, and then 18 is the fire code. So online, that will be updated. It'll take a bit for that to get updated because we're on a schedule with Unicode, but they'll send us also a paper for our books.
Good. Okay, Mayor's Comments. A few housekeeping things. I have asked Fawn today to order the handbook for newly-elected officials to provide to our newly-placed council, but if there's anyone else that would like this book, it is also available electronically at IML, but if anybody wants a physical copy, let me know, and she'll get those ordered. I'm going to try to find someone on the council that will help to mentor the individuals that are coming on. I, we're all, really, everybody's like, pretty new, so we'll work on that, and I will have committees ready now for the next meeting, after they get seated. I have had two more opportunities to spend days with department heads since our last meeting. I was with Greg one day, quite enlightening, we went riding around for a few hours and checked on some violations he had received. We did a couple of inspections on permits that were in play. We found a construction job going on that did not have a permit, and Greg was very respectful to the homeowner and politely told him all the steps he needed to take. Did a lot of conversation about things going on, so I learned good stuff from him. Gary, I was with Gary for one day, and we just talked a lot about all the things that are going on in Parks and Rec, and as, just with Chris, all of our department heads have a lot to do, and their days are filled by squirrels. I mean, it's, you know, it's crazy how much is going on. Next Monday is the Great Race. I really hope that everybody has an opportunity to get downtown from 1 to 4 next Monday and be a part of this spectacle that's coming to our town. If you haven't watched about the Great Race, go on to YouTube. It is, we are so lucky to have been chosen as a stop, and I know Liz, and everybody's been working hard for all the stuff that's going to go on. 150 cars, over 50 years old, in this precision-timed thing, it just looks so cool. So I hope everybody can tell your friends and neighbors and everybody, I mean, take your lunch late, go downtown and watch, be a parade. So that's, that's for that. The rest of my, I want to speak on, I received a written correspondence this week from someone who chose not to sign their name, with some feedback about all, most of the decisions that were made at last council meeting, with a lot of questions for me. So I'm going to use this as my means of providing answers to their questions. Late last fall, the council approved a five-year capital improvement plan, which encompasses streets, sidewalks, and wastewater treatment projects. The plan is comprehensive, identifying all the specifics, and a projected budget for the timeline. The city engineering staff has rated every street in town using a GIS rating system. This plan prioritized those streets which fell into the worst ratings and put them into the plan. The feedback letter I received asks specific questions about East Water Street and South Vermilion. East Water is in the plan, from Elm to Pearl, and has been submitted to the Federal Aid to Urban Program, which is also known as FAU to most of us, as our next rebuild project for FAU funds. Other streets in the past, recently in memory, that have been FAU are Indiana, Cleary, and Aurora. Big projects, complete rebuilds, great improvements to those streets. The federal road fund primarily funds those with a little bit of matching. Water Street is slated to be on the project in fiscal year 2029. There's lots of engineering work that has to be done, but it's in the works, and that road will be improved, God willing, that nothing major comes up besides till then. South Vermilion Street is also in the plan to be improved fiscal year 2030. Hannah is putting this on our city website. If not today, she's going to have it up soon this week, so that anyone in our community can go on and look and see what we have preliminarily planned, and obviously, things may take change because roads might change, but everybody's got accessibility to this. Where is all of our gas tax money going? I get asked this on the street all the time, and it's, so to clarify, Pontiac does not have a gas tax. Illinois has a motor fuel tax. Currently, that is .483 per gallon tax on gasoline, and diesel is .558. The state of Illinois collects those funds from the fuel dispensing operators, and they are primarily allocated to the state themselves for their road funds and the state construction account for highway maintenance. Municipalities like us are allocated funds based on their population. It has absolutely nothing to do with how many gallons of gas get pumped in our community. In the last 12 months, we have received $505,529.21. Anybody can go out onto iDOT and look and see what they send us every month, an average of $42,000. That amount by itself would not pay for what we are going to repave South Mill Street this summer. That's what we get in one year, in our, in that gas tax that everybody thinks we get. So anybody's got access to this. Our council approved an additional one-cent sales tax that went into effect on January 1st. That one cent is earmarked to pay for transportation and infrastructure needs. We don't accomplish much in that five-year plan we just made without that extra penny. Through our first five months receipts, we are averaging $155,000 a month. If that average continues, it generates two and a half times more than this motor fuel allocation in one year. That comes from all the purchases that everybody makes in our community by people that live in all zip codes, not just 61764 corporate limit residents, thanks to everybody that shop local. And so those are the biggest answers to the questions I got, but somewhat, they also wanted to know when the rec center generator was being installed. Jim tells me it's still on order, set to be installed hopefully sometime this next month. Yes, the pad is there, but we're just waiting for the materials to arrive. So anybody's willing, who wants to call me and ask me questions, ask me to take care of anything, I've, I've taken lots of phone calls, I've been in people's homes, I've gone on site visits for people who are complaining about things, and I, I, I want to answer your questions, and I would love for you to sign your letters, so that I know who you are. And thank you to everybody. And with that, city council comments?
When they call you, ask them if they know who their council...
When they call you, ask them if they know who their councilman is, would you?
Sure. Yep. Happy to.
I've been watching your commentary on your, your...
Facebook page?
Yeah, with your trips, with all the individual, the department heads, and I did that when I came on the council, and we should encourage our new council members to do the same thing. And I probably owe a chance to do it again because it's been five years since then. It's a great experience, you really get to know the city, you really get to see things that you just did not expect.
Yep.
It's great. And your commentary there is excellent. Thank you, Mayor Kelly.
I want people to have information. Use it for what they want, but I will tell them the truth. It might not be the answer they want to hear, but, anybody else? City administrator?
Yeah, I would just echo some of the comments we've heard earlier. Thanks to Greg, a lot of hard work on getting those building codes up, fire chief as well, and community original, and they can take, knock home runs out of the park here this next month. Again, I just, you know, remind that we have, we have the Rockin' at the River, the Great Race, and this whole weekend with the car show, 16 through the 23rd is just going to be, I mean, 19 through the 23rd is going to be...
When the bullet's coming?
19th.
Wednesday night.
Yeah, they come Wednesday night, their nationals last all weekend, so they'll be doing different events. They have a trip up to Joliet planned, but each night they stay here, and then they have, they'll be at the Rockin' at the River concert, they'll be parked, they'll have a spot reserved over Bank of Pontiac. And I just thank for the public for their patience in getting this parking lot, you know, it's hard to see that there is actually an entrance in here, and we have two offices, you can tell, inside the building, inside this built, part of the building right now. And as soon as this walkway is done and the Mill Street is opened, we'll be able to revert back to coming in from Mill Street up the sidewalk into City Hall. So hopefully, that will happen sooner rather than later. I know the, the two staff members that work out here get pretty lonely back here by themselves, they're a long way away from everyone else, but, so, that's it.
Public comment? Anybody out there? Oh, I'm sorry, Frank, I missed you.
At, at the last meeting, I threw out the idea of renaming the airport Art Leach Field. Have we made any progress on that, or will there be any progress?
So I can tell you, I've, I've spoken with our airport manager, and I'm still waiting on some information from the state. It's not as easy as it might, of just renaming it's not as easy because there's a lot of processes that have to happen statewide and through the ALPs and all the maps and all of that. So I, again, I requested information from the state, have not heard back from them, so I will continue to reach out to them. I, I will tell you that it was recommended to me that we find another method of recognizing art rather than renaming as, that could be quite confusing and troublesome for the airport. I'll find out, I'll get all the information from the state and report it to the council.
Public comment? Anybody out there?
I will kudos Greg like everybody else is. Some you know, some you don't. I am a contractor, I work literally from Southern Illinois up to Cook County, and I order the state almost every day. Most municipalities have adopted it 2017, it was a brave addition, and it's all related to 23 or 24.
For our clerk, could you state your name and your address?
Sorry, Kirk Slabok, 13195 East 1920 North Road.
Got it.
That's a lot of numbers.
Next door to the mayor's daughter.
Anyone else out there? Okay, with no further business, I declare this meeting adjourned. Motion by Scott Cranford, second by Jerry Cawzer. Thank you. Thank you, everybody.